Tuesday, October 18th. The Chair entertain a motion to approve the rules.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Um, no.
Anyone else considering discussion? All right, there being none, all in favor?
We have approved the amendment. Oh, no, you're right.
Those opposed?
I'm opposed.
All right, motion carries. One, two, three, four to one. The clerk would read the revisions.
To the consent agenda, excuse me, to the consent agenda, we are adding item 5Z, resolution amend in the municipal budget for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2022, to reallocate Gulf of Mexi, Gulf of Mexico Security Act grant funds into closed capital project number 1033 Bayview Waterfront Restoration Project.
Thank you. Chair entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Moved.
Moved and seconded by Mr. Lawrence and Mr. Gines. Any discussion?
Yes, I just don't think it's an emergency item, so I'm not going to support this. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? There being none, all in favor?
Hey, Nathan.
All right, we'll get started in the presentation agenda. Mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome everybody to our October, second October meeting. Think we've had a pretty good couple of weeks. Had the most beautiful October ever. Been very successful and, uh, and I think everybody enjoyed cruising and all, every day in October. Um, I do like to recognize, I think that the cemetery tour is going on. It started yesterday and I think with five to seven today, so I encourage everyone to participate in that. Now hopefully, our council meeting will be finished by five o'clock and, uh, enjoy that.
We'll do our best, Mayor.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any department reports?
Pardon me. I think Mike wanted to give you an update on your projects.
Just a couple of updates. For the last few months, you've been watching the contractor build the walkway between Oak Street and the Small Craft Harbor. That project is complete. We just issued a notice to proceed for Andercor to start the, uh, the $7 million Point Cadet Marina upgrades. So, we are waiting any, any second, any minute, any day, they're going to give us authority to award the contract for the, um, Main Street Crossing. And another one, uh, that I wanted to share with you is, as you remember, we had four ARPA projects that we submitted. And while we don't have the results back yet, that's anticipated shortly, but we have already bid and open bids and are ready to award the first of those, uh, ARPA projects. So, we're, um, we're, that's just some of the highlights right now. I just wanted to let you know.
Okay, thank you.
When would they actually award those? The four that you put in? You said ahead and awarded them. It went to the heavy deadline to award them?
Four ARPA projects that were submitted for approval.
The four ARPA projects that this council approved us submitting were an extension of the water and sewer lines up Shriners to near the city limits, the extension of the water line up Lorraine to the city limits, the, um, second phase of the water line replacement in the, um, West Biloxi, and the, uh, construction of the new well, um, where the well went dry a decade ago.
That's not right.
Uh, at, in West Biloxi. Those were the four projects. They're all bid ready. One of them's already been bid and we're ready to award.
We feel November, I think. We feel like they're going to get an answer in November for those projects that were submitted. This is all then dumped in legislature and a number of committees are, you know, weighing and, uh, rating all the projects and, uh, just another, you know, level of, uh, stuff.
The fact that our projects were ready will mean that they will be scored well, very well, way, way above projects that are just a dream.
Supposedly.
So, yeah. So, we should be, we should be, we should, all four of our projects really ought to be approved.
That'd be good for us. I was just wondering if they had like, like November's a good time, so it's going to happen pretty quick. We'll know pretty quick if they're going to do it or not.
And we're hopeful too that some of these projects are the same projects that the county may be able to join us in and give us another 25%.
Last, we had the company we ordered the plaques from, like the World War, uh, One plaque?
Yeah, I even, I can ask, because I think Matthew Dubas had identified some things when we're talking about redoing the whole World War II.
No, what this World War, the 12-minute?
All of it, yeah, both sides.
We was always doing palm trees. The palm trees always died, so I figured we'd put a plaque down there on the beach.
I'll get that next week.
Because I mean, that's something needed to be done. Because the palm trees die, we have to replace the palm tree, put a plaque up with their names and everything on it, and then take care of that.
The plaques that are on the, uh...
Yeah, that's World War I. Supposedly 12 people that lost their lives in World War I from City of Biloxi.
I guess a good answer for that.
And I, I know we talked about this before, but, uh, the fence around Grudge Center, are we going to replace that fence? It's really looking bad.
It is. It's going to be in some Waban situations.
Yeah. And then the dog park at, uh, Severo Park, they put in all new playground equipment.
Fence is in that too.
Fence that in. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gines.
Yes, I have, uh, two questions. Um, wanted to get an update on the Division Street project. Is there a time date that they're going to put a little pavement down?
Asphalt will be going down end of this week or early next week. We're still on schedule to, um, have that gate open all the way through and by November the 4th. Um, the streetlights were due in yesterday. They didn't come in, but we got a revised date, a couple, a couple more days before we get all the streetlights in and, and then they've got to be installed.
Okay, great.
So, really what we got left is streetlights, pavings, striping, and we're home free.
Gotcha, gotcha. So, by Veterans Day. Okay, uh, my other question is, uh, I was
asked earlier today about the, and I know this is, uh, on the other group, the Lighthouse Pier. Is there a timeframe that they're probably going to be, uh?
Well, that's not a happy story, but it's, there is a story. I mean, we have now submitted to FEMA our request for consideration of a Build Back Better project. And the design is about 30% complete. We don't want to go any further until FEMA weighs in.
Let me jump in as far as weighing in. Uh, the mitigation that they allowing us this time, hadn't been in the future, you know, initially, uh, if it cost you a million dollars to replace it, you got a million dollars or some percentage.
Gotcha.
Well, they allow mitigation where if it costs us 1.5 million to replace it, which that's about the right number, it allows another 1.5, uh, in addition to Build Back Better, keep it from happening again. The design of the 800-foot pier and then testing the pilings and those kinds of things were determined that the pier has little life left in it as far as the pilings, probably eight years of life, uh, in a piling. So, what was decided is that we're going to replace the whole thing with concrete pilings, replace the wooden, uh, pilings and then the decking, as well as the flow-through, uh, walking deck, and then use, I think, 320 feet of, uh, rock-based breakwater. So, uh, that will be from the seawall, 320 feet out, and then the rest of it would be concrete. Bottom line, talk about happy story, but it's 4.2 million project, 4.2 million dollar project. We can see 3.5 million in match. So, we're trying to put pieces and puzzles together to get that 4.2, to put that pier back in, uh, you know, the shape that we'll never, we'll never have to worry about again.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming?
I think, Mike, you gave me some updates already regarding a couple of the projects, projects in the ward. Um, Mr. Mayor, if, uh, we could get together and, and talk about some of the stuff we need to be due in Club Moss. I know I went out there and met with the citizens, and we talked about that area with some things that I think we can do immediately. Mike, we talked about the retention area in the back of it, that we needed to get, uh, some cleaner access for water to flow to it, um, to help relieve some of the flooding in that area. If we could find some time, pencil in some time to discuss the Club Moss area in chief. Um, I don't know if, if there's any way to get someone, an officer or some more traffic on Baywood Drive in Biloxi between Sabrina and Pops Ferry Road. I've gotten some, I mean, between Sabrina and Sunkist. I've just had some complaints about, um, speeding through that area. I know people do use it as a, as a cut through when Pops Ferry is backed up. However, I've looked out there at a way to maybe mitigate some of that, um, speeding by putting stop signs at intersections, but we've already done that. We have stop signs at virtually every intersection. The distance between sign to sign isn't that long. I don't think even putting a speed bump would help that. But if we had a little more police presence to let people know that, um, Sunkist. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, any appointments coming for, uh, Tree Committee and the Planning Commission? Those vacancies?
Yeah, I saw some coming.
You know, it's like a road trip. Are we there yet? One more mile, one more mile. Well, it's been several months. Seriously, we need to get some...
I get together in the next few days and we'll line it up for the next meeting.
And, I mean, just a note and observation, sometimes the Planning Commission meeting, uh, you only have nine members there on the commission. If it was fully staffed, it'd be, I think, 15. I don't know when it was last fully staffed. It might have been decades ago, but, uh, it'd be great to fill those vacancies. Uh, Parrishich Park, I wanted to check on that. I'd stop by to look at it. There was a podium, a lect, not a podium, a lectern, and it looks like it's cracked, but actually it's stable. It just needs some cosmetic repair, maybe mortar to spruce it up a little bit. I know there are no park benches there. I think that was because the homeless pretty much monopolos, monopolize those benches. But just litter in the park, maybe a little bit of landscaping, that kind of stuff would improve it quite a bit. Um, Small Craft Harbor Wi-Fi, I know that we had, it's, is everything functioning there? I don't...
My understanding, it is.
As far as we know, it's, it's working, but it's, it's, it's there and available to patrons. Okay, thank you. Uh, and the last, last thing, I know you'll be excited about this. Might we consider maybe some sort of solar demonstration project on a city building just to see what solar energy might be able to do for us? And maybe Mississippi Power might have some grants out there to at least look and see what the payback period may be, uh, how it might help us in that energy respect. Just an observation in tracking the energy costs this year with the cost of fuel, I'm sure, who, we spent about a million more than we usually do.
It's an interesting point, and I think we have a little bit better opportunity at the stadium for those kinds of things.
Well, thank you. I think that's the nicest thing you've ever said to me. That was an interesting point.
I didn't mean to say it that way.
I'm going to put that in my notes here. That concludes my comments. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett?
A couple of things. Still waiting on the fence around the lift station at Eagle Point Park. I know that we got some quotes on that. Do we know when that's going to be done?
Okay, good deal. Um, other than that, I think the only thing left at Eagle Point Park, um, outside of lighting at some point, is, um, the ditch to get cleaned out one last time this, this, um, this year. Um, and then if we could keep it trimmed down, that would be good. And then if we could get some kind of ribbon cutting scheduled
for that, um, I believe that everything's done out there. And do you know if we have any more money left in that budget, or are we tapped out on that? Or, Mike, you know where we're at on that?
There is, there is a little bit left. I, I don't want to quote, but I'll send you, I'll pull the project, uh, register and I'll send you the answer.
Okay, we just...
There's two kinds of money in there. Bond money and, and...
And state money.
Tylenol's money. So, we have to be careful about what we spend it on.
Okay, all right. Um, then, um, the other things is just, you know, same things. Boyett Road, um, where we have that crossover drainage, every time we have a rain, it's just washing the road out worse and worse. And I know that's probably going to be a small capital project, but that's something that if we have a really heavy rain, that road's going to end up going, or a large section of it at that, in that, at that crossing. Same thing, Curve on Oakland, just south of the fire station. Um, every time it rains, it gets worse. Um, those two things need to be looked at. And both of them are capital projects, but they're very small capital projects in the grand scheme of things. So...
Issued, uh, you know, our repair replace contractor is referred to as bottom to top construction. We issued four purchase orders to them to, for four separate jobs in the last week.
Okay, all right. And then, um, the only other thing is, again, um, the easements while it's dry, if we could get some of this contractual services, um, to, to get, get some of those easements cleaned out that we don't have the ability to get to whenever we get in that wet season. They can't get in there and get them cleaned out. Um, and I, I know, I don't know about everywhere else in my ward, there's a lot of them. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Uh, for my report, I got a few things. Uh, the first, um, at Bayview and North Haven where it tees, it's actually a three-way stop, but there's a yield sign. I'd like to ask the traffic committee to assess it and see if the yield sign is appropriate, or if a stop sign is appropriate. I got some complaints, and I sat out there for about an hour, and there are cars that zoom right through that yield sign because it doesn't say stop, it says yield. And, um, there's more and more younger kids in some of those houses in, in that neighborhood, and maybe it's more appropriate to put a stop sign. Uh, the next is for Ms. Bell, Director Bell. I know we've been talking about this tournament coming up at AJ Holloway Sportsplex this weekend. Um, I just, can you give me a brief update? I know there were questions on the sound system, questions on the scoreboards. I've heard that they've been improved or repaired. Can you give me the status on those two, please?
The scoreboards are working. All of them. He was out there yesterday morning, so we saw firsthand. As far as the, um, PA system, I'm working on that. Um, with him only maybe doing two or three fields, I just don't want to spend $7,000 out there on city money. So, right now, it looks like all I need to do is buy speakers. I found a mixer and some PA, some microphones.
Okay. But perhaps eventually, everything will be in working order for future tournaments and when we, uh, make improvements out there, perhaps? Okay.
Yep.
All right. I know, Mayor, the bond money. I know. Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate it. Um, I do want to touch, uh, also my appreciation. Uh, I held my town hall meeting, uh, this past, uh, Wednesday at the Blake. So, shout out to the Blake. They were gracious and they organized, uh, the meeting rooms and, and the kitchen. Uh, my wife got started at 11 o'clock and she made pusher rotas all the way to 5:30. And, uh, I don't know how many, uh, hundreds of pusher rotas she made, but they were, they were great. Uh, that was followed by a one-on-one with the residents. There's 88 residents out at the Blake, and, uh, I, I think I met with two-thirds of them. And we, basically it was an icebreaker, lot of, a lot of questions about the city. Um, they're trying to get registered for the upcoming elections in, in November and beyond. And, uh, it was just good to hear those stories from those folks. And then that was followed by a 5:30 meeting. Uh, I want to thank Mr. Leonard, uh, for coming and giving a, a report on, on the, uh, Pops Ferry Extension and other topics. I want to thank you for that. The directors and the surrogates, uh, that were there. Uh, Nick Moody with, um, Machada and Potana gave, uh, his recap on the study that was done out there for the, uh, Sportsplex. And, uh, it was just, just a real good packed house meeting. Thank Mr. Tisdale for showing up. We, we saved him a seat too, and he was right in the center of the room. Uh, and it was, it was good to see him.
It was the only ward meeting we've ever been fed before. Maybe that's a new tradition.
Then pusher rotas do it. I'm telling you, they turn out when you put the pusher rotas out there. Um, and then last, um, as has been customary, when we lose, uh, you know, one of our Biloxi, um, finest, Ed Chizzy Kavasevich, uh, passed away, like to, uh, consider closing this meeting in memory of, uh, Ed Chizzy Kavasevich. That concludes my report. Move on to the public agenda, citizens' comments. We have a total of 45 minutes allotted for this, uh, section of the agenda. Uh, each person will have up to three minutes. Uh, you come up to the front, take your seat, sign in legibly, uh, your name and your address, and then in the microphone clearly state your name as well and your address for the clerk to record. So, we'll get started on this side of the room. Anyone else, anyone, anyone would like to come up and speak on this side of the room? Okay, anyone on my right, your left, like to come up and speak? Anyone in the back? Director, you, you got your hand up back there? Okay, all right. All right, uh, no citizens' comments today, so that, uh, public, uh, citizen's comments is closed. Move on to the policy agenda. If the clerk would read item A.
Ordinances to amend section 5 dash 4 dash 18 of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to standards for material and equipment.
There a motion?
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
All right, motion by Mr. Barrett, seconded by Mr. Tisdale. This is a first reading. Move on to item B.
Ordinances to amend section 20 dash 3 dash 24-8, parking along the US Highway 90, parking bays and service drives.
This was motion by Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Gines. Mr. Tisdale, you have the floor?
Yeah, my, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is to reconcile the ordinance with the posted hours that are down there on the parking bays at Beach Boulevard or Highway 90 now. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Gines?
Same thing he said.
Question I have, and I think this was brought up years ago when I think a similar, uh, measure was brought up. What happens if someone is there on our beautiful beach and they're floundering at night? And they're there after hours. They're not going to be allowed after hours to go out and get their flounder light and gig? Just asking the question.
If somebody's a fisherman down there, somebody floundering, the officer logs down, make sure that's what they're doing.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Mostly it's for people that are, they're doing other things.
Understood.
Mostly.
All right, thank you, Chief. Any other comments? There being none, call for the question. All in favor? Those opposed, motion carries. Resolutions, item C.
Resolution appointing Director of the Department of Engineering for the City of Biloxi, Mississippi.
Chair entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Barrett, seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Barrett, you have the floor?
No discussion.
Mr. Tisdale?
Uh, I have nothing to add to what Mr. Barrett did or didn't say.
All right. Anyone else have any comments?
I know, uh, Chris, they've worked here before, and you come back. I hope we come back with the right attitude, be positive of City of Biloxi. He's running that department. You need to be positive for our employees and the City of Biloxi. All right, thank you.
All right, anyone else? I, I'd like for you to come up here and say a few words, address the council, get it on record here. Kristy, welcome back, by the way.
First of all, I'd like to start, uh, thank you to the mayor for having me back. Um, I'm really excited for him even to put me up here. Um, I'm excited to come back. I've missed Biloxi. Uh, it's my hometown. It's where I've grown up. So, it feels good to be back, um, or the possibility of being back. I guess y'all haven't voted yet, but, but I'm looking forward to it. I'm looking forward to coming back and doing great things. Um, I hear great things are happening. I've been talking to Mike about projects and I'm excited. Yes, I'm ready. I'm ready.
And I hope you saved all my stuff on your computer.
I, I got you. Don't worry.
All right. Mike, you haven't been getting your check?
No, they tell me that, uh, even though I haven't, haven't been, yeah, I got comm time, yeah.
Check's in the mail.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Kristy, uh, thank you for saying a few words.
Thank you.
Uh, there being no other discussion, call for the question. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. All right. All right, uh, motion for the consent agenda?
So, move.
Second.
All right, moved by Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Barrett. Mr. Tisdale, you have the
Rarely do I not have questions, but this is one of those times. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Barrett?
Now, if we can just get George to do that too, we'll be in good shape. Um, I'll be, I'm a, I'm a no on item N.
A no on item N. Did you get that? Okay. Mr. Demming?
Just a question out of curiosity. What are the Knights of Peter Claver?
Mr. Gines can tell you.
Yeah, Knights of Peter Claver, and they are hosting a school. Uh, what they doing is they have a, uh, they're training people in carpentry, training them in electrical. Um, they're going to be out, they've already assessed some of our parts, replacing some of the canopies, things like that. Um, we couldn't, at that price, we couldn't get anyone contractual to do that. So, it's a donation to the school. Those are some of the projects that they would be doing, um, replacing like the, um, whatever you call them, those sheds, those canopies. Uh, we have a house in Henry Beck Park, replacing all the boards on there, which is, which would cost us a whole lot. So, um, uh, also we have some lighting issues, some electrical issues. They have electricians that they are training, and they will be upgrading and taking care of a lot of that stuff for us.
Number class, you know, apprentice program.
Yeah, apprentice program. And that would open the door for us and the hiring, some people, getting them ready to bring them aboard.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Newman? Mr. Gines, as I recall, you, you made this proposal during our budget meeting, so...
I'm good.
I think you said it all, but if you got anything else?
That's it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Mr. Lawrence?
You sure you got it all?
I got it.
I had a couple of questions. Uh, on E, would I have a podium for $1,200? I thought you could buy these things. I thought you didn't have to have that on agenda to buy something under $5,000.
This is not just a, a podium. This has got a microphone built into it with a sound system.
It's $1,200.
So that it can project, Chester.
Yeah, that's, when I said, I thought you could buy stuff under $5,000. You can't do that? When I'll put it on the budget?
We had to move, we had to move the money. We had to move the money from last year's budget to this year's budget because it was delivered late. We had ordered it. So, what this is, this is a budget amendment to move it from last year's budget into this year's budget. That's what it is.
So, the money was already there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. On the next one, uh, F, the 16,000, I know we amended the budget again. That wasn't in the budget originally, these two trucks?
Our truck.
Command vehicles.
We just did the budget, so I'm just trying to see what...
Yes, sir. No, this was stuff allocated to last year's budget. We just still haven't received, uh, the vehicles. So, we're just moving the money from one to the next, one year to the next.
So, you hadn't, you hadn't actually bought them?
We bought them. They've had the PO since November or December. It's just how long it takes to get a vehicle in right now.
So, the same thing, you took the money from last year's budget and paying it?
Yes, sir. It's just rolling it from one to the next.
Yeah, just trying to make sure if it was amended the budget already, we got authorization, but...
It's not been delivered, so you can't pay till it's delivered.
Yeah, we, we can't actually send them a, a check until they actually give us the truck. So, that's why we're having to carry it from one to the next.
Okay. And on, uh, on N, could you explain exactly what we're doing and what's happening with this eminent domain?
Was that N as in November?
I've got it. This is a, um, portion of the roadway for the new Pops Ferry Extension. And this is the vacant tract of land that's to the east of Mason, New Orleans, and we cannot agree on a, a purchase price. So, it's authorizing the city to proceed with eminent domain and put the money into court that the appraisers have determined is the proper value.
All right. Alright. Okay, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Tisdale, you have a question?
Is this, this parcel we're talking about, the eminent domain, is that the last parcel we have to acquire, or we still working on one or two, still a couple left?
I believe that is the last parcel, there, there are a few parcels where there's some paperwork still to be dealt with, but this is the last potential lawsuit or any, this would, this would pretty much tie it up.
Okay, then, and that, that would provide us with the property we need to do that extension from Pass Road to Highway 90? Okay, thank you.
Alright, we've already heard one of the exceptions from Mr. Barrett, anyone else have any exceptions, Mr. Lawrence?
No.
Mr. Gines?
None.
Ms. Newman?
No one in.
Which one?
In.
In?
November.
Okay, did you get that? Okay, any exceptions?
November.
November is your exception.
November exceptions.
Okay, thank you.
Two.
Two.
Three.
Three?
Dave and Tisdale.
Tisdale didn't, Tisdale objected to November.
Or attempted to.
Alright, there being no other objections, all in favor with the objections noted, all opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Who's that from? You, okay, alright. Alright, I guess we'll move on to the routine agenda, no code enforcement hearings today. Motion for the routine?
So move.
I'll second.
Alright, move by Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Gines. Mr. Tisdale, you have the floor?
Not a thing, thank you.
Mr. Gines?
None.
Walk.
Good afternoon, Council.
Good afternoon.
Apparently, we do not have any money coming in from MEMA, but with this docket, we'll have several large pay applications for our contractor, Nikke, so we go into MEMA for reimbursement, so hopefully by the first meeting in November, our night meeting, I'll be able to update you with funds coming in.
We'll be looking forward to that, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, the chair will introduce a motion to adjourn, or, I'm sorry. Oh, let's vote on the routine, all in favor of the routine? Those opposed? Routine is done, I'd like to suggest that we, yes?
Yeah, I also would like to add, when you move that, Janie Chester, which is the wife of one of the first black police administrators here, Carl Chester, add her to that list for me, please.
Absolutely, Janie Chester.
Chester, yes.
Alright, we'd like to recess, we're adjourning or recessing today?
Recess.
Recessing. Recession in memory of Janie Chester and also Ed Chizzy Kavasevich. Have a second by everyone?
Oh, everyone's second.
Alright, all in favor? Those opposed? We are in recess, we'll take a brief, three-minute break, and we'll allow the clerk to reset.